And here that I have to read at the beginning of every public meeting. Welcome to the July 23rd, 2020 Electronic Meeting of the Environmental Commission. This meeting is in accordance with executive orders from the governor to effect social distancing and mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We intend to conduct this meeting similarly to an in-person meeting. However, please be patient if there are technical issues. Public comment will be via telephone only. To speak during any of the public comment opportunities, of which there are two, please call 1-888-788-0099. So I'll repeat that, 1-888-788-0099. And enter meeting ID number 924-5796-9823. So I'll repeat that, meeting ID number 924-5796-9823. This information is also available on the published agenda in the public notices section of the city website. And on the broadcast of this meeting on CTN Channel 6, AT&amp;T Channel 99. And online at www.a2gov.org/watchctn. So, so the first item on the agenda is Galen, would you do the roll call?
I sure will. Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Graham. Okay, absent, Commissioner Skinner. Commissioner Skinner. Commissioner Needham. Here. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Slavic.
Here.
Commissioner Appel.
Here.
Commissioner Bannister. Commissioner Polly Ward.
Yeah.
Did I pronounce that correct?
Fine.
Okay. Commissioner President Brown.
Present, huh?
Commissioner, Commissioner Overpet. Commissioner Overpet. Commissioner Mersky. Commissioner Mersky. Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Okay, that's roll call.
All right, thank you, Galen. The next item on the agenda is, let's see, let me add these up. We have one, two, three, four. Five. We have seven voting members present, I believe, but we're not, this is a working session, I'll remind everybody. So we will not be voting on any resolutions or other issues at this meeting. So first of all, let's welcome Youth Commissioner Gabby Buendia to the Environmental Commission. We're so happy to see you here. And do you want to say a few things about yourself?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. My name is Gabby Buendia. I am a, do a couple of different things. I'm an environmental educator at the Ecology Center. I also am an organizer for the Michigan chapter of the Sierra Club. And I just moved to Ann Arbor full-time back in last August after living here during the summers, and I'm glad to be joining you all.
Well, thank you very much. So, let's see, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Did everybody have a chance to see the agenda? Okay, so is there a motion to approve it?
Second.
A second? Are we, are in favor of approving the agenda as written? Say aye.
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 Or raise your hand. Any dissents? It passes unanimously?
Steve?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just checked my email on my phone and it looks like Commissioner Gibb Randall is waiting to be admitted to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And, excuse me, I believe that Ann Bannister, Commissioner Bannister is also having difficulty getting in.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was trying to figure out why I wasn't here. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Bob.
Bye, Shannon.
Hi.
So, we're at the part of the meeting now for the approval of the minutes. So, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? And I should apologize that I made, I added some tentative action points to this meeting because I discussed that at our last meeting, but we didn't really finalize them, you know, before the adjournment. So, I'm just putting them up there to remind everybody. And that I would like to, from now on, do some action points, you know, to follow up for the next meeting. You know, and we would cover those action points at the beginning of each meeting. Just to track progress on various issues or at the more, or at the appropriate time in the agenda. So, let's see, so are there any, is there any discussion over the minutes as written? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the minutes? Shannon, do I have a second? Bob Needham, seconds. All who approved the minutes of the June 25th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any dissent? Okay, the minutes are passed unanimously down. So we're reaching the first public commentary period. So I'm going to read another script here. And so Galen, I think you may see somebody who's trying to get into, who's called into the meeting. And what you should do is, in order, in the order in which they appear, you should write that down and then you should, and then, and then you can select them using the last three digits of their phone number.
Okay.
And give them access. So, a public commentary, this is an opportunity for persons to speak up for up to three minutes. Please call 1-888-788-0099 and enter meeting ID number 924-5796-9823. This information is also displayed on the meeting agenda and video feed. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand, one by one, using the last three digits of your phone number. In order to electronically raise your hand to indicate your desire to speak, please press star nine on your phone. You will hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sounds so that we may hear you clearly. Please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Be patient, there is a delay of up to 30 seconds before the connection is established. So Galen, do you see any, anybody requesting to make public comment?
I see no one at this time. Hey, I just got a, well, no one at this time that's in here.
Yeah, and they will just remind you that they'll all be phoning you. So, okay. So, let's just wait about another 15 seconds. Okay, well, let's move on to new business. Um, the first item on the agenda for new business is a review of tentative action points from the last meeting. The first one I wrote down was engage with ordinance review committee of the planning commission to identify ordinance changes required to advance the A20 goals. This was a great idea of Shannon's. I don't know if you had a chance to connect up with Missy at city staff about that, or how, figured out how to initiate that.
So we have not met with city staff, but we, John and I have talked about it and talked about kind of who we might be able to pull into this. Obviously, Missy would be important, or somebody, somebody from the Office of Sustainability. And then we also talked about bringing in some fellow architects and some fellow engineers that may not be a permanent part of it, but that we could at least draw on in terms of where people have experienced frustrations, you know, with being able to get this kind of work done and where city code gets in the way. And, you know, looking for opportunities where there may be some wiggle room, where we're still not sacrificing health, safety, welfare, but looking for ways that we can make the 2030 goals happen more easily. For instance, you know, we have an anti-idling ordinance, and we could be reading that in our pre-construction meetings with contractors, and we don't. You know, they idle outside of my, my house right now for 15 minutes. And if that were made clear at the beginning, then, then I think that people would have a sense of these things. And I think we have a lot of good things in the books, we're just not figuring out how to, how to make them happen. That's just one example, let alone other things too. But I feel like there's a lot of ways that we could take the things that we have and make them more effective. And then also thinking about tweaking ordinances so that, and code, so that we can be able to meet our goals more quickly. So John is out of town right now, but we connect, we've connected and we have kind of a beginnings of who we might think about coming in to the, to the group and interviewing for the process. And we are both excited to take it on. Feels like a fruitful area of being able to make some good change happen.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. And by John, you must mean John Mersky?
Yes, sorry, yes, correct.
Okay, um, so the second item was seize capstone proposals, not to recruit a working group. Um, Peck, is there any, anything, any progress on that so far? Oh, you're muted.
No, we're, I mean, we're not, we're, well, yeah, I mean, we're way out of cycle for that right now. So the time to start thinking about that's in the fall, starting, you know, a month, two months from now, maybe in September.
Okay, so we shouldn't even think about that till September 15th or so?
Well, I would love to, you know, but right now, and the other thing that I didn't anticipate is that our, all our planning for fall is still going on. And as long as that's going on, it's all the COVID stuff, how to make it safe. There's no, there's no headroom in faculty thinking, or anyone's thinking for that far ahead. Unfortunately, and I apologize for that.
No apologies necessary. So, it's all very understandable. Okay, so we'll move that down to revisiting that on September, September, at the September meeting. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. So the third action point would be suggest metrics for ecological improvement related to integrated pest management and natural features improvements. So this is a long-term trend that needs to be consistently measured over time. So Chris and Rita and Carrie were going to discuss this. Does anybody have anything to relate to that at this point?
Well, we talked recently, but we, we really just got to the point, and Carrie, jump in if you want, got to the point of saying that, that the work for pollinators would be kind of folded into whatever, what else is working on, what else we're working on for the natural features group. And so, going to be some kind of coordination with that.
Okay.
But that's the start that I have. Carrie, would you like to add?
Yeah, we also considered the answer we got from Jen Lawson about what we can do next and what we can do to help. And she said, there's nothing at this point. So we kind of got stuck a little there. But I think we're still going to move forward. One of the ideas that we had before was doing a certification program to reduce turf grass, and that was one of our ideas. But we haven't, we haven't talked to Jen about that lately. But we also have to consolidate all of our goals and come up with a priority, list of priorities with the new natural features committee, which is now the Pollinators Committee with the Water Group, not Committee. The Pollinators Working Group and the Water Working Group is now in the natural features.
Okay. Okay, yeah, fair enough, you know, we, as I said before, I think it's good to select some specific goals that we can meet with the resources we have available, you know, to try to help the city and the council as much as we can, according to our bylaws. So, you know, metrics are going to be part of that, but they're kind of up in the air as well, because I had a discussion with John about this. And, you know, it's not clear that the sustainability dashboard that was set up in 2012 is really going to, is really working moving forward. And so there needs to be some discussions with the city administrator about this. And, you know, and how performance metrics are actually going to be managed within the city. And, and how to go forward with the, you know, the dashboard that we inherited from 2012, from the work that was done in 2011, 2012. You know, which is a bit worrisome, but I think it's important that we are able to demonstrate, you know, tangible, tangible work products. And having goals and metrics are very important to that end. All right, so the next, so my understanding is that you, that there's going to be a meeting later on, sometime before the August meeting. And you all are going to sort through all this. So we'll put this on the agenda then for the August meeting, okay?
So, Steve, yep. I just want to add one other thing, that the natural features group is working on an ordinance update for trees. So just consider that something to be in the pipeline.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll discuss that more later in the meeting about the revised goals in response to A20. Okay, so, all right, so, and then the next, the fourth item here was going forward, OSI staff will submit asks to the working groups for discussion and refinement, and then proceed to the full commission for discussion. So I think this would be a more effective process than giving all, given all of us ideas at one mission, at one commission meeting. So I think it'd be good to just process it a bit in the working group level, and then see what happens. So I'm hoping to get, I have not talked to Missy about that yet. So I'm going to make that, I'll see how that goes and report at the August meeting about how, what kind of process we're going to have for processing some of these more general asks that Missy had. Because we all want to support the A20 plan, but we did not register many specific asks when Missy talked to us at the last meeting on June 25th. So I think this would be a good process. Is there anybody that wants to say anything about this topic right now? Okay, so the next item is to consolidate the working group's SMART goals. And, and so that, I think everybody's, everybody's done that, the different working groups. Of course, some things are still in flux, but that we, we proceed to the next item on the agenda here, which is the revised goals in response to A20. So I expect we'll have quite a lot of discussion about this. What I've done is I got, I got these documents from the solid waste working group, the natural features working group, you know, the pollinators and the, and the water quality group. And I consolidated them into a Google document. I sent out an email sharing it with everybody. I'm not sure if everybody's had the time to look at it, but people had a chance to look at it? Okay, well, I will.
Was consolidated of all the working groups, I only saw the solid waste one.
Yeah, oh.
Oh, no, yes.
Yeah, later on, they, they, yeah, so this was part of that document was a mention about how, you know, how the, these three other working groups decided they were going to consolidate. But in, in my mind, I think it's very important that for each of our specific goals, at least, that we ought to have one commissioner to take responsibility for it, for advancing that goal. I mean, for example, in the solid waste working group, I'm taking personal responsibility for their construction and demolition ordinance and metrics. So by the end of the year, I would like to be able to present, you know, I'm not, not ready to go to council. So, but a, but something ready for a more refined review by the city staff. And I'm hoping to get that done by September. So that would give enough time, you know, for city staff and council to think about it, look over it a little bit more. And, and then see where it goes from there. And we can, and then we can all discuss it, you know, at the October or the early December meeting. And decide whether to file a resolution and vote on a resolution or vote on a, on a draft ordinance to pass on to council. So that's just one example. So I can go down through the list here. Does anybody wish to say anything at this point? Shannon?
I think our review of coordinate ordinance is going to take longer than a month. So I think it would be more realistic for us to, for our group to do it in October rather than September. Because there's, there's, there's a big old book to go through, so.
Sure, of course. So, let's see. First of all, did everybody find this a helpful process, you know, using Google Docs and sharing it? This, yeah, this is what we've been doing within the, you know, within the solid waste working group. So, yeah, Bob. Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I don't know if this is possible, but I wondered if it might be a good idea for you to share your screen and, and show the document, you know, in case anyone is watching at home.
That's a good question. So let's do an experiment. I'll try to share my screen. So the host is disabled attendee screen sharing. So the host is CTN, I believe. So I'm not able to do that. So that's a great idea. I think I'll write down, that down as an action point to see how that can be done, you know, using this, yes, Galen?
This is the host.
Me?
Yeah, if you wanted to share it.
Oh, okay, here I go. So can everybody see this now? Okay. So I've included the working group minutes from our last meeting, which we always hold, the solid waste working group meets on the first Thursday of the month now. And, and so the action points are here, as I mentioned, I'm organizing the information. And I'm going to be, I'm going to be responsible for the success of construction and demolition ordinance and metrics by the end of the year. But just to review what SMART goals are, you know, the specific, meaningful, actionable, relevant and timely. So as I mentioned, I would like to have a really pretty well-polished draft document consistent with Michigan law, hopefully, and available for discussion by the, by the September meeting. Okay. John Mersky is going to lead a SMART goal to measure an institute community-wide refrigerant recycling. John's not here right now, but I'll just say in his behalf that, you know, this was one of the asks, the specific asks of, of Missy during her talk last June. I would remind everybody that these refrigerant gases have over a thousand times the greenhouse gas potential as carbon dioxide. They're a whole order of magnitude higher than anything else. And they're not just used for refrigerants, they're also used as blowing, as for blowing, conjectured for molding of plastic foam. And they're also used in, you know, for spray cans, for hairspray, and things like that. So this came out as the number one kind of, kind of goal and project drawdown. So John Mersky is working with staff and other people in the solid waste working group. And we're going to try to see what can be done about at least tracking and trying to get a tighter control and public awareness about this threat to the, to the climate. Other than that, I need to talk to city staff, Molly and Majewski and Eileen about longer-term goals of consumption-based greenhouse gold, gas metrics, and a possible capstone project proposal. And processes for optimizing the end-use value of recyclables and organics. It looks like the, since we met last, the Murph contract has been approved by city council in principle, which was a major milestone. And so, already, it looks like recycling in Ann Arbor will be the contractor who will be helping provide data for their end-use and helping us optimize diversion. But again, it's the city staff that are really responsible for this, not the contractor. So we'll figure out a process to, to get that working as smoothly as possible. And I just listed the discussion highlights for people's information. So now for the water, natural features and pollinators working groups, the, the major action in the last month was that they've all agreed to combine their respective working groups. So I'll let the leaders of those groups talk about these later on, and about how they see this working. So if there are any questions, first of all, about the solid waste working group? Actions or goals? John?
Steve, yeah, just a question. I'm just looking back at an email you sent to the working group on Tuesday. And you had also mentioned citywide, but I think you meant year-round composting?
Oh, yeah.
As another item, I don't know if you want to bring that in now?
Yeah, I could do that. It's citywide, but also, by that I meant commercial as well as residential. Because right now, commercial, none of the commercial recycling or organics collections is really tracked. City staff are working on that right now, but it'd be good to get something sent in place. So here, oh. So this is a shared document. That means that people should feel free to comment on it and edit it. So I would, in the future, I'll probably give everybody editing privileges, or at least commenting privileges before the meeting, so that we have a summary of the working groups available before we, before each meeting. So anything else about solid waste working group? I can't see everybody's hand, because when I'm sharing my screen, I can only see four people. So you'll have to speak up. Okay, so Bob, do you want to comment on the, on the water working group?
Sure. Sorry, did you have something else to say?
No, I don't, sorry.
Yeah, so these were the main things that we talked about earlier in the year. The floodplain ordinance, in the form of a zoning overlay district, is, you know, moving forward sort of independent of, of the water working group. But I did exchange some emails with Jerry Hancock, and he is happy to present where that's at to us at our August meeting. And then we can discuss it and potentially vote on, you know, supporting that as it stands. So that would be an item for the August agenda if everyone's amenable to it. Jerry is available on that date. So, so that's one that's moving forward quite well. The potential updates to the city green streets ordinance, I'm not sure what we were talking about exactly there, quite frankly. But we can take that up at the first joint meeting of the, the larger. the larger natural features working group and see what people's thoughts are and hopefully get someone to run with that one. The third item is just a, a pretty simple thing that was talked about, um, getting some educational signs, uh, installed out at the Argo canoe and kayak livery. And, um, I, I tried to find this before the meeting. I could have sworn that there was some recent city action or at least proposed about, um, making other improvements at Argo, you know, expanding the parking area and things. So i- i- if that is in fact the case, um, you know, I think it would be, you know, pretty easy to just try to jump on that and she, yeah, Shannon has some information.
Yeah, we just reviewed it, um, on Tuesday night, uh, for Argo improvements. And so, yes, there will be like new sidewalk and a new parking lot and things like that. So it is a good time if there's going to be some sort of coordination that goes on.
Yeah, so we could just kind of send an email from the commission, um, to, I guess it would maybe the Parks Department, right, Shannon?
Correct. And, um, Hillary, I'm forgetting her last name, is the, uh, the staff person that presented and I think has been in charge of the design.
Um, so we could just kind of, uh, send an email, uh, you know, suggesting that and, and if they're willing to do it, then we could get into some more specifics. The microplastics, you know, uh, this is, uh, we've, we've heard and I don't have the specific, study or metrics in front of me, but we've heard that the Huron River is in particularly bad shape in regards to microplastics. So I think that would be a really great thing to tackle and, you know, I, I'd be willing to, to, uh, take the lead on that if, if no one else wants to, um, hopefully by the end of the year, maybe come up with just, you know, some sort of recommendations. Yeah, Shannon.
Sorry, keep jumping in here. Um, I was just part of that committee and we, when we talked about it, one of the things that we had spoken about with that was, um, that there were some interesting, um, products on the market that you could put in your, in your, um, washer. And that, that actually kind of, uh, attract microplastics.
Yeah.
And we talked about perhaps actually having those be sold down at Argo.
Right.
Um, because people are much more in touch with the river down there. So that was one thing that kind of came out as an idea. But it hasn't, you know, gone any further than that. So, um, with all this discussion of Argo.
Yeah.
That might be another kind of interesting thing to add into that list there, just as a way of letting that kind of evolve further.
Absolutely. So like, you know, hopefully we can talk about that at the, uh, working group level and get some recommendations together for the full commission to consider, uh, later in the year. Then the fifth one is really, I think, more of a communication issue that we can also talk about further. I'm not, you know, I think the other items are more, more important, frankly, um, but we could talk about that one as well if, at the, at the next full working group meeting.
Okay. Um, let's see, any, any comments? Again, I can't see everybody, so you'll have to speak up. So, um, I only have one comment, Bob, and that is that, uh, I've gathered some papers on microplastics. So I'll share with you, okay, in the meantime.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there's some, some basic facts are that first of all, a major source is fleece, you know, synthetic fabric. And fleece. Also, uh, people have measured microplastics that come off of car tires. And brake pads in the Arctic. Cause if you look at, uh, deposition of microplastics, about half, roughly half comes from the air, it's airborne. And the other half comes through river runoff into the oceans. So this is a, this has become a big problem also because these micro pollutants, uh, major pollutants like, um, some, um, it's like PFOS compounds as well as some, some antichrom disrupting compounds will concentrate, they will bind to these microplastic particles. And of course, they, they, many of them are small enough that they're easily inhaled. Uh, they're easily ingested and they're absorbed. They're actually small enough that they'll be absorbed by, within the cells of your body. So it's a potential exposure problem in the long term. No reason to be alarmist at this point, but it's a good time to check, check, try to check it and see, see what can be done to reasonably control it. As a potential safety threat. Okay, so there, um, if there's no comments about the water working group agenda, let's pass on to the pollinator working group, Ma Carey.
Well, these are actually the two things that I mentioned earlier. The assisting the city staff with the IMP, uh, educational implementation and strategy. And they don't, they don't need our help at the moment. And then, um, drafting and a certification program for, oh wait, no, yeah, test pesticide use as well as turf grass area reduction. And we haven't, um, worked on that yet.
Okay.
And that's all we, that, do I have any, am I missing anything, Rita? You're muted.
All right, sorry. Yes, you covered it. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I do want to say though, I think that, um, just considering, um, the first item that even though Jen is addressing it, I, I think it would be great if we could talk about, developing communications in a way that, that has some kind of overall effectiveness. And I'm, and I'm just thinking that we have the, the city's communication staff. It would be great if we could work with them in some ways to get some of these ideas across to the community.
Yeah. Yeah, are there any, uh, comments on the pollinator working group agenda?
I have one more thing to add, just, um, piggybacking on what Rita said. We are, we are ready to help in any way and there are a lot of things that we can do, we think we could do to help out with getting the word out. Um, so, you know, we're, we're willing and able and, um, we're just going to wait for further direction.
Okay, yeah, that's all good, all good. But, um, is there any way you can turn that into a SMART goal? Like to, you know, finish off something, uh, by, you know, by a certain date. As a specific thing, I know that it's, um, it's a continuing process, but I think it would be good to try to think about, you know, what's the tangible goal?
Um, so Steve, I just want to say that I think that we should reach out to, um, Jen Lawrence and ask her where we can assist since, um, she had kind of a direction on that. Um, and I think it would be a, a good thing to do actually, cause we didn't get it much of a chance to talk with her about options last time and I, I, I would like to do.
Is she the, uh, I mean, is she the contact person with city staff or?
Yeah, she is for the, um, the IMP work and educational outreach.
Okay.
That was, that was her presentation last time.
Right, yeah. Okay, is there, um, I mean, is there something the Parks Commission can help out with here?
I think the SMART goal sounds good, um, to put that on there, cause we have asked, well, what, three, three or four times, um, this, the working group to help. And they didn't need our help, but I'd like Stephen, your idea of having a, put a, a goal and a deadline on there. And so that gives us a little more oomph to our requests to have a meeting with them to see how we could implement some of our de, ideas, which was to help spread the word and all as Carrie mentioned.
Okay, thanks, Anne. Yeah, I mean, it's just in my experience, you know, you, things can become unfocused if you don't have a specific, you know, if you don't have a specific deadline or a goal. I mean, not like, and there are no penalties for going beyond it. But just having something is a very useful expectation for everybody to have.
Could I just, uh, mention that this seems like it, uh, is a potential opportunity for C's projects, maybe? Uh, in terms of, uh, educational opportunity here, something that could be tested out and then, uh, the fed back through to be able to see what works well in terms of getting this information out about lawn reduction and, you know, sort of turf area reduction, native plants, pollinator habitat. It seems like there's a lot of overlap with things that students could potentially be interested in.
Um, no, that sounds like a good idea. What do you think, uh, Carrie and Rita?
I think that's a great idea. We, I think so far from our new natural features committee, uh, working group, we're going to have a lot of projects for the C students when, when they do their call for proposals.
Yep, I agree. I think it's a great idea. And, um, if we can get with them to develop measurable types of things for these kind of communications, that would be super.
Okay, so who?
So there's one of your benchmarks for September.
Yeah, who wants to make that happen? Is there a volunteer?
To propose that to the, to C's students?
Uh, to have something available, yeah. To have something kind of fleshed out by September.
So I think, uh, sorry if I talk.
Yeah, of course.
I think the ideal thing would be, um, just off the top of my head, uh, is that if, uh, people had some general, you know, everyone on the commission and anyone else that we're connected with, uh, brainstorm general ideas, um, for that time. And then, uh, we would also present, uh, somehow I, either I would do it or I'd get someone else to do it. Whoever would do it best, let's put it that way, uh, to present sort of what the process is and a way to craft what is considered to be a, a really good master's project idea. One that would, of course, attract students. I don't know why that did that. Someone turned off my video. I bet I'll leave my video off since someone turned it off. And, uh, yeah, so unless, uh, you guys have a desire to do it a different way.
Well, uh, well, Peck, um, I mean, I think you have to tell us what, you know, how fleshed out you'd like things to be and by when. Cause I, I think everybody has a vague idea about what, you know, what would constitute like a real, you know, uh, um, a body of information that would be, you know, adequate to whatever decision or judgments have to be made to bring it forward.
But there are going to be several different components that have to go into the project to make it meaningful for the students and to meet their requirements. So I think maybe that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
In terms of, um, getting someone to tell us what components have to be part of the project.
Yeah, cause if it isn't an attractive project to the students and to faculty members, uh, then it won't really fly. And we're trying to change it so that the client, meaning someone in, you know, related to us and in Arbor would be able to be a client, quote unquote. But then we'd want to get a faculty member to help with the client to craft a proposal. And then those proposals get put in front of the students later in the fall. Uh, so the hope is that by the end of the fall, students have pretty much picked which project they want to do. There are always a good number more projects than there are students. Um, so part of this is making it an interesting project. Um, and this, you know, part of what we would present in September would be what makes an interesting project. Cause one thing I've been really saddened by, as I, you know, I'm trying hard to push the system, get more, get more students, but also, uh, I don't know, just make the whole process work better, is that we've had some really good clients uh, who have proposed projects who haven't gotten students. And in some cases, it's kind of almost embarrassing, you know, like state legislators. You know, who get all fired up and then they don't get, and the students don't want to work with them. And it's more because the, the pitch isn't necessarily good, you know, it's as much that as the projects are, say, not ideal.
Okay, so how, so Peck, how would you suggest we, what's, how would you, what would be a fruitful process?
Well, what I love is, what I'm hearing here today is we continue this process of coming up with kind of proto ideas, uh, or just call them ideas. And then, uh, what makes them good for students? You know, I think the idea we just heard about, you know, figuring out the best way to communicate. Environmentally sound practices to citizens and then tracking how well different approaches work. Uh, that would be good. And certainly there's a lot of literature on that and the big question is what works in, in Arbor, I suppose. I mean, that's, that's that level of, of idea. Um, and so it doesn't have to be really detailed at this stage. Um, and then we have to somehow, I have to somehow find the right folks. Um, and I don't know if the best way to do it is in a meeting like we're having now, but it might be, we create what, some kind of, uh, working group on this, right? Um, or whatever mechanism that exists for those who have those ideas to sit with, um, a couple of our staff, one or more of our staff in the C's to talk about what makes a good master's projects. And then there can be some iteration. And then that means by the end of September, we could actually have a bunch of ideas, uh, that are being implemented or at least put in front of the students. You know, but then it would have to, of course, we have to build the link with the faculty member and do all that kind of stuff too in the meantime. You know, in other words, is it a good thing for this commission to be doing it? Or is it a better thing for the commissioners who are interested in this, uh, plus the folks on their working groups who are interested in this? Uh, plus some C's folks to do this separately. And it would be a Zoom call just like this, but it would be, uh, just focused on that topic.
Well, um, I mean, as the chair, I have, according to our bylaws, I have the power to, um, you know, to schedule a special meeting. It would be a public meeting, but otherwise, um, the only idea that comes immediately to my mind is that we funnel ideas up through the working groups and then consolidate them into a document and then, um, and then, um, and then, and then you could make a comment on it, Peck, as part of that group.
Well, yeah, but I think what's, yeah, that's missing a really vital part of this, which is to have interaction between those who are thinking of the idea for a project and those in the school who really understand how to make good projects. In other words, it's that iteration that turns a idea into a cool project. And that is the only way you're going to get students interested. Um, and so the question is, is a special meeting idea might work just fine as long as I can invite some other, um, you know, colleagues to come in, you know, cause as a dean, I know quite a bit about the master's projects, but I'm not the guy who runs them. And you want to have some, you want some people really experienced in, you know, making them happen.
Okay, well, no, this is good. So, um, I think, I feel like a pin was put into the bubble of like having another meeting, which I, I would agree with, but, uh, it may be better for just to have an action point now where commissioners forward their ideas to you. Okay, Peck? And then, um, you can deal with them as you, you know, as appropriate. Just tell us what level of detail we need to get into at this point.
Okay. Um, so before I tell you what detail, level of detail, when you say deal with them as appropriate, do you mean I could then have an offline meeting with them?
Yeah.
Oh, cool. Uh, yes. So I don't think, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, just a few sentences would drag me into a paragraph would be great. Um, and once I see what the ideas look like at any level, I will, um, sort of ask some additional questions, perhaps, you know, and get a better articulation of what's going on. But I think the key thing will be not so much to spend time really working on the details of the proposed project, but just to have a, you know, like a 10,000 foot view of the project. Um, and then in a meeting, when we talk about it with knowledgeable people in C's, um, we'll be able to calibrate our ideas to the right level of, uh, detail. And people could then go away, um, and refine their ideas and fill in the missing detail. And then I would have some folks at C's who would be able to, uh, interact with each person to make sure the proposal is well thought out. And then we would chop them around, I, I suppose, I, you know, I think the next step would be shopping around the faculty members. And, and, uh, and then once the faculty member, you have a faculty member and you have a client, then, and a good idea that's articulated, then you're ready to go to the students.
Okay. Now I have a better idea of the process myself. Um, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. Um, it seems like we're going to have a few ideas coming out of the natural features working group. So, um, we can, with all of this information now that we have in the background that we have, we can, um, develop some ideas in our elevator pitch, so to speak, to the students and, um, and, um, Peck, you can put us in touch with any of your staff members from, from there. I think that our group can, can take it from here.
That would be fine. And it sounds like you've been through it, Carrie. I mean,
I have.
Okay. So you've been to one of our fairs?
Well, I've, I've worked with students. I've worked with the master's students. Yeah.
Okay, great. Cause we have, and every year we have a client fair too, where the students and all the clients come and they actually set up tables. It's really kind of fun. The thing I think stinks about it, you know, it's just, it's not ideal. Um, but we're trying every year to make it better. I'm really great that you're doing that. Thank you. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to do that. Yep.
Okay, so when?
Just send me your ideas. Uh, and I, that sounds like the most efficient way to do it. She's, she knows what she's doing. So send me your ideas and I will put you, each person who generates an idea in touch with someone in C's and you'll be able to iterate and make a pitch.
Do you want to set a deadline for that?
Again, you know, I don't think anything's going to happen until September, but if you want to start sending them to me, I can start collating them. What I already started doing while we were talking and sending an email to try and figure out when people would be receptive. I just have a funny feeling that right now there's no bandwidth for it, but I think there will be, uh, you know, by the time the semester starts.
Okay.
I mean, we're figuring out amazingly arcane details. You know, like how do you root students through a building after, before and after class safely? You know, I mean, that's kind of stuff we're working on now.
Yeah, um, yeah. Okay.
And a lot of these, I have one more thing on that. I'm sorry for interrupting, but, um, and a lot of these projects are going to be, they don't have to be in person. So they might be more well-suited for the remote learning atmosphere also.
You, music to my ears. I propose you just put Carrie in charge of this whole thing. No, I mean, you're, I mean, you're right on target and I really appreciate it. I'm not, I'm just being stupid. But she's right. We really need projects this year probably that are not going to require, uh, in-person interactions. One of the nice things though is we have approval to do human subjects. You know, that got taken away. Uh, and the governors are really, you know, the more, uh, shut down stages of the pandemic. Now we have it back. And that means that students can actually work remotely, um, with or socially distanced, uh, with people. So doing survey work and things like that are possible. Doing fieldwork's possible too, but it has to be done under certain circumstances. Cautions. So all that stuff, I mean, makes this year even more interesting than most and more reason to start early working with the staff. So we just start sending me your ideas. I will find out, uh, who is the best person to interact with and I'll, I'll set that all up.
Okay.
I put September 1. That'd be better, I think. Or, you know, whatever Labor Day is.
Sure. Sure. We just want to make sure that, um, you know, there's enough time to process it. To make them, to meet the next.
Yeah, yeah. You know, part of my job is to keep my team from exploding. They're pretty close right now.
Okay. So, um, any more discussion about the, uh, pollinator working group agenda? Okay, so, um, let's go on to the natural features working group agenda. Uh, Chris is not here, but, uh, Carrie or Rita can speak up about this. Yeah?
Commissioner Bannister also is a member. Um, so we, um, just heard from, uh, Chris that he's unable to make a meeting tomorrow. Um, I proposed that we do some, uh, kind of subgroup work on the ordinance for heritage trees that we've been working on. In the meantime, between now and, and our August meeting, though, I'm hoping to get that organized. But that is yet to be done. Um, so we are also working on a, a Google Doc revision of, um, the, the ordinance on, uh, natural features specifically, it has, is, um, large trees, heritage trees.
So Rita, could you, um, remind me, what's the definition of a heritage tree and a landmark tree?
Um, I don't think I can do it off the top of my head, but landmark is, is, uh, a large tree. A heritage tree is exceptionally large and old for its species. And we have a species list and we have, um, sizes, uh, based on diameter at breast height for each of the species. For each of the categories, for, uh, a landmark tree and heritage. So that's a A star point, but we're looking at, at other kinds of things to, um, support their protection.
Have you all been discussing, um, some kind of a date when, um, this might be ready for the full commission?
We have not set a date.
Okay. You know, just a gentle encouragement.
I hear it. Yeah, I hear it. Um, so, um, I know that Chris intends to, uh, join us and meet, uh, in August. So, and as I said, I offered to try and get a subgroup of us together to, uh, critique the work that's been done. So there has been some initial review and, we'll see if we can make it move further and faster.
Okay. Uh, well, um, yeah, why don't you just update us at the next commission meeting?
Sure.
Hey Stephen, I know you can't see everybody. So this is Shannon raising her hand.
Okay.
I would just add, I would just add one thing to, to Rita's description, and that is that landmark trees are currently part of the regulatory process. And, um, I go, that's something that, that any developer will, um, encounter as they put aside plan, uh, forward through the city. The heritage tree is a new category. And so that's kind of what's different about it is that, um, you know, any tree is a landmark tree. I think for an oak, it's like 18 inches, uh, diameter, breast height, but it's, it's regular, you know, so, so is one that's six feet across, you know, so, and they have like the same kind of, uh, kind of penalty, if you will, you know, it's, it's 50% of whatever the diameter is. But, um, so the heritage tree is a whole different category that they would be adding on. And so that's, I think, one of the, the big changes that the group would be, uh, working on. So landmarks exist, heritage doesn't.
Okay.
I just might add, this is Anne on number 11. Um, I believe that was in Christopher's last email that that is part of the, um, C's project list, number 11, where we get the two neighborhoods rather than do a whole new woodland map for the whole city. We would have these two neighborhoods. And, uh, he, uh, Chris for Graham was going to talk to Jason Talent about that further.
Okay. So thanks, Anne. Yeah, that, uh, that does look like a very attractive potential C's capstone project. I'd work on it myself. But, um,
You gotta start paying tuition.
I know. So, um, let's see. So in terms of number 10, help seek amendments to floodplain provisions, um, in chapter 55. Bob, do you have any input on that or?
Well, I, I, I think that's the same thing that I mentioned earlier. I, I think that's, uh, the floodplain overlay district that, um, Jerry Hancock is spearheading.
Can I ask a quick logistics question here with the sort of combination of these three groups, these three working groups under one? What does that mean sort of day to day for, uh, how we might be meeting? The reason why I ask is because the natural features working group has been, uh, meeting and talking and having really good discussions for a very long time. And I think that some new people in there, uh, could do a great job of trying to figure out how we extract policy out of the things that were, like I say, having very fruitful discussions about. So I put that out there, sort of, sort of a larger question about how, uh, these three groups work and if, uh, natural features can get a little, uh, sort of boost from some other folks listening in sometimes.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great point, Mike. I mean, the way I've been thinking about this is, um, you know, in my experience, nothing really happens until there's a champion for it. So I think my sense of this, um, of the commission and, um, you know, the people in it and its bylaws and everything, I would hope that what we can do is have, um, like each, in, you know, a working group, the first kind of tier of working group should be around the SMART goals. You know, where a commissioner is going to lead a group, there only needs to be one, but they could recruit whoever else they want from either the commission or, um, and, or anybody from the community, general community, broader community to work on that goal. But I think that that would be a tier one effort that, uh, to, to, to do a tangible, to, to do a tangible product, to put a stake in the ground and to get it done. I think it's, it's good to have one person responsible for that, not a whole group, not a committee. That's just from my experience, personal experience. And then below that, um, the working groups can work to develop SMART goals out of the more broader goals and concerns that we all have. So they can be discussion within the broader working groups. And, um, I'm just not, I would like, um, I would be, I would like to have a discussion about this in this meeting. You know, to talk about how this would really facilitate a process on moving forward. So, um, I'm throwing that out there. So I'm wondering, um, so, uh, people speak up if they want to comment. Again, I can't see everybody.
Um, I'll pick that up again. Uh, I guess part of this question also relates to this idea of a, of a C's project and also the sort of sustainable landscape stuff that natural features is talking about with the sort of lawn reduction things that pollinators are talking about, um, and the obvious water quality improvements that we get. So I, I feel like there's, um, I'm terrible at these things or I'd step up and volunteer, but I feel like there's this opportunity to do it while we're all here together to sort of figure out how, um, uh, there might be something, uh, out of, uh, legislation that's already been passed for this, uh, lawn reduction effort, uh, to, to, to turn into something that's that John Marzkey is going to be able to say, hey, there's progress on.
Yeah. Anybody else? Well, um, so again, I mean, I just think that, uh, it's, it's more difficult to get something done unless somebody chooses to be a champion for it. So, you know, it's up to them to decide how much they're going to get done and how much time. But they should feel free that they can recruit as many people and resources as they can to get to, to bring their vision to fruition. And meanwhile, um, we, this would be, this is the forum for discussing, um, for each of these, for, for anything in the cities that pertains to the city's environment. This is a forum for discussing what some of these, um, um, you know, broader concerns are. But without some articulation and some specificity, um, it's hard to make progress on anything. So, uh, I, I agree with Mike about that.
Uh, so this is Rita speaking right now. Um, I would be willing to, to, um, step forward, at least on the pollinator side of things. Um, but also I, as a member of the natural features working group, there is a fairly large group, as you know, that's been meeting to talk about this. And those people are not represent, not here in this meeting tonight. And I feel like it's worthwhile to have a chance to talk with them, um, as contributors. I'd like to get input from them as opposed to just taking this and, and running. Um, that's my feeling right now.
No, I, I think that's a good idea. Is, uh, would, could natural features still go on tomorrow without Chris?
I have proposed that and, um, I, unfortunately I didn't even see his message until late today. So I don't know.
Just because I put it out there, because it's on many people's schedule already and, uh, it could be a good opportunity to be able to hash some of this out. Um, and maybe, you know, we, uh, we keep Chris's spirit in mind in terms of the bigger trees, but then see how, um, this ordinance could really potentially be shaped on the ground to get people to try and change their behavior. You know, it's really the passage of, the fact that council has adapted it is what makes this such an exciting opportunity to be able to, um, make a quantifiable opportunity towards sustainability with people's land use choices. So yeah, I would be more than happy to zoom into, uh, this meeting tomorrow if that would sort of help to keep the ball rolling.
Right. Okay. Well, um, I will see if I can reach out to people tonight. Um, and, um, let y'all know. And if not tomorrow, then it possibly is something that could be done relatively soon. I don't know.
Okay.
So the other thing that I want to say is that, um, what you're suggesting, Mike, is, is something that, um, that we need to keep in the context of whatever Jim Lawson is doing as well. So it's like, somehow there's got to be some kind of coordination there that would be worthwhile, I think. So I'll reach out to her too.
Okay, so are, uh, so I'm a little confused. I mean, are all these, are all these topics in, you know, natural features, pollinator and, uh, and the water feature working group, are they all like, is Jen Lawson the focal point on city staff for all of these?
No. No, these are just the goals from when we were separate working groups. I think many of these are what we presented in our meeting as our goals. I can't remember when we did that, but, um, earlier in the, in the winter, earlier in the year. So anything having to do with water is going to be with Jen. Uh, Lawson, I, I suspect. But, um, in terms of the meeting that's going to, that could potentially happen soon with natural features, I think it'll probably involve all of us, not all of us, but everybody in, in the pollinator and the water working groups, along with the natural features. So this is something that we can discuss when we meet. So this is something that we can discuss when we meet.
Okay. I mean, at this point, I mean, the question comes to my mind about what's the, what's the perceived advantage of consolidating all these working groups?
Rita, were you going to say something? Oh, now you're on mute.
Oh, you're muted, Rita.
I think that this was a suggestion from the last meeting of the Environmental Commission to consolidate these groups, and so we did.
Oh.
That's my understanding of it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Missy suggested that, that there was any kind of rationale around it or broad discussion about it that I recall. I mean, I think that's up to us. It's not up to Missy or the OSI. It's like, I think it's up to us collectively to figure out how we're going to be most productive. So. So maybe you all can just have a, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's too bad that, I mean, I'm sorry that Chris couldn't participate tomorrow, but maybe you could just continue a discussion at that point. And then inform, inform him what, what the discussion points were. And if he has any questions.
The meeting that's set up tomorrow was really focused on trees.
And that's what Chris has been working on.
Correct.
Maybe you can make some more progress on figuring out what other goals you might specify besides the ongoing, which is at a pretty late stage. My understanding is, you know, the tree amendments, the heritage trees. You know, all these other things are not quite as far along in our process and the commission's process as these tree amendments to chapter 55. Yeah? Am I wrong?
Well, I mean, on the other side hand, we have the pollinator program, I'm sorry, the IPM program that has been passed by council. And so that's kind of active as well, you know, so I don't know. So.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It really feels like it's two different things to me as we're talking, even though we said we would consolidate them. It just, it just does to me. I don't know. Carrie, any thought?
Yeah, I think that we can, as a, as a new group, as a new working group, figure out what the priorities are and that, that's certainly one major component, I'd imagine. So. And there are some overlaps I see in the goals.
Okay. So, so maybe you all can make some progress on that tomorrow.
Well, it might not be tomorrow, but we, we are planning to meet.
I'm holding an artist for, sorry.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get together and consolidate and prioritize, come up with some goals.
Okay. I mean, are people comfortable with this? As a basic organizational principle? I mean, because I mean what I say, that I, in my experience, nothing's happened without a champion. And somebody should really declare that they're going to do something by a certain time. And then we should resource those as our first priority.
So here's the thing, Steve. Chris is our champion on the trees.
Yeah.
You know, and he's not in this meeting.
Oh, no.
And so I feel like not exactly comfortable jumping in and saying I'm the champion on the trees because he's been the one.
Well, no, I wouldn't do that. Of course, that's, but there are all these, these other things that are listed as well.
Right. And those have not been talked over with the rest of the group yet. We've been doing trees.
Okay. So why don't you all discuss IPM and lawns?
Um, I'm not going to promise that for tomorrow because the group isn't exactly ready for that, but yes.
Okay. All right, so. So does anybody, before we move on to the next agenda item, is there any, does anybody feel the need to discuss these topics any further? Okay. So. Let's move on to the, to the next item on the agenda, which are reports from committees, other commissions, council and chair. John's not here, so the Energy Commission will wait till the next meeting. Shannon, how about planning?
I would say that the, the carbon neutrality plan has really emboldened the Planning Commission to make asks of developers for projects that are not staying within their existing zoning. And one that just passed the other night, which might be of interest to all of you in terms of its process, was one called Valhalla, which is right across from Pioneer and is surrounded by the U of M golf course. Right now, it's a collection of, of single family homes and the developers there wanted to upzone it a whole lot, like a whole lot more density. And basically, the levers that we felt like we had to be able to even consider that ask was to make it very green, which it really wasn't coming in. It was, it was a little bit, but not much. So as we work through this process, they've come before us three different times and they are now the first all-electric building to go through the planning process. They have solar over most of the buildings and I think have like a 500,000, you know, kilowatt system and, and have EV charging stations and also have affordable housing as a component of this as well. So I think that this, this whole 2030 plan has really given us some direction and frankly, some teeth for asks when people are not doing a by right development. So it's a, it's a big change from what is currently there and it will definitely be a shift from what people would see as they're driving down that portion of Main Street. But it also is on transit, it's next to a grocery store. You can still walk to town from there. You're a part of bikeable areas. And for a lot of reasons, it fits the city's master plan in other ways, even though the zoning was not part of that. It was actually, it was a township parcel. So, kind of one of the funny little islands. So I think that, you know, because of the, you know, the, the work that, that came out of some of the things that we've been supporting, that Planning Commission feels much more emboldened to be able to make those kinds of asks and has, I think, also some, some specific things to ask for and some tools to think about with, with that whole process. So it feels, it, it feels good to be able to, you know, think about how we can push developers to make things far more green than what they were coming into it. So it has yet to go to city council. I'm sure that there'll be changes there or whether it will pass, we don't know. But to have, you know, a multifamily complex be all electric and have a sizable portion of it on solar is a, is a big shift from the business that's been done so far. So that's what I would say is my report.
Okay. That sounds very encouraging. Is this the parcel that's protected by that large netting from the golf course?
It is kind of, it's surrounded, it's on the Main Street side and it's surrounded by the U of M golf course. So it's kind of a funny little parcel that is tucked in. So there are homes that are near it, but not next to it because the golf course kind of encompasses, it goes on all sides, except for the Main Street side. So the nearest homes are several hundred feet away. But yeah, so it's a, it's a, it was a funny little township island that was zoned to be single family. But it's being upzoned a lot to be able to accommodate this development and we felt like this was our chance to be able to, you know, think about making it a whole lot more green than it was, so.
Well, that's good to hear. Anybody else? Hey, Mike, how about the Parks Commission? I'm sorry. You're muted.
Uh, no meeting again this month. We're bumped to next week.
Okay. Okay. How about council, Ann?
Well, I think Stephen, you already mentioned the good news that staff and everyone reached an agreement with Recycle Ann Arbor to reopen the Murph and, and how potentially huge that can be for southeastern Michigan. If we can be a regional headquarters again for recycling and recycling education. And so I know I'm excited to do more on that and, and then see, we'll be saving estimated hundreds of thousands of dollars a month from shipping it to Ohio. And I'm hoping there'll be lots more exciting things we can do with the materials. You know, even if there isn't a market someplace else, there might be some innovative markets for our recycled goods. And then all the education for reducing in the beginning. So. I'm sure there'll be a lot of exciting things for all of us to do, helping all of that unfold.
No, that's really good news, Ann. And it, it will involve a lot more regional cooperation. So this just brings up the whole topic of WERMA again, you know, the regionalization proposal. So I don't know. I don't know if that's about where that is now and, and what can be done to, if there's any, any actions that could be done to help, help make regional discussions and planning easier, you know, between city staff and county and other, other entities.
Yes. And I spoke to Recycle Ann Arbor earlier this week and, um, I think the general idea was that we could still recycle for other communities without needing a WERMA agreement. And a WERMA agreement would be nice, but as there's two stumbling blocks were the weighted voting, where Ann Arbor would be on an equal footing with much smaller communities, and that didn't sound like in our best interests or prudent. And to put ourselves at that kind of a disadvantage. And then the responsible contractor language. So I think the WERMA itself is, is still in the background. But nonetheless, we can still partner with other communities to accept their recycled materials.
Okay, yeah. Well, thanks a lot for that update. Is there anything else you'd like to mention?
No, I think that was the main.
Okay. Yep, thank you. So that's time for the chair report. I only have two things to mention and one is, one is, um. Well, I can't read my notes. So one is the attendance. Our bylaws indicate that commissioners need to attend, need, need to attend a majority of the meetings, annual meetings that, that, you know, once you've missed three meetings, you're kind of on notice. So I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that this is something that I'm going to pay more attention to. And that, you know, if people are absent their third time for their third meeting in a year, I'm going to try to talk to them about, about, you know, about that. And and so I just wanted to mention that, that it's in our bylaws and that we should be, we should be paying attention to this. We've had a lot of applicants to the commission. We have a lot of work to do and I think it's important we have. If people don't feel like they have the time or the real commitment to fulfill this role, that we should probably try to consider, you know, finding another candidate to come join the commission and, and put their ore in the water. So, and the other thing I've noticed is that we had not, Susan Hudson was our vice chair. And so she's been gone since May. So that the next item on the agenda would be electing a vice chair. It would be part of our August meeting agenda. So I'm looking for any volunteers or nominations. And so that'll be part of the agenda, so I'd like people to think about that. That's all I have to say right now. So the next item on the agenda is, is there any discussion? Anybody like to discuss anything about that?
I just noticed Chris Graham is over in the attendees section. I don't know if he can be let in or if they, if he's just permanently in the attendees today.
I just moved him over. He's a panelist now, he can speak.
He was in purgatory. Hey, Chris.
Hi, Steve.
Hi. How long have you been there?
A while.
Wow, sorry.
I was trying to get in, but I couldn't figure out how to do it. I guess you have to do it.
Yeah, I think Galen has to do that. So we'll do better next time.
Why my fish is showing instead of meat? There we go. Thank you very much.
So.
Zoom, 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 zoom.
So we're, we're at the, we're at the part of the agenda where it's reporting from staff. I can give you a call and update you about, I'll get the minutes drafted soon and send it to you and we'll, we can have a discussion sometime at your discretion. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen at this point. And so the next item on the agenda is the report from staff. Galen, you have the floor?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. We have a few items that I would love to update the commission on. Right now, last month, we had a week-long youth, A20 Youth Sustainability Week, which was in partnership with, and our public schools, youth councils. We have an excellent group of youth that we've been working with. Also, we're working on a partnership with the Freedom Center. And we're doing two PSAs right now. We're doing a PSA, the first one would be like an introduction to A20 and the next one would be a multitude of PSAs, actually, over the seven strategies. So there'll be a PSA for each strategy. That's going to be all action oriented, informing residents on what they could do or can do. So that's my update right now. And also, we're looking forward to definitely a good year with Ann Arbor Public Schools. We see our Youth Sustainability Week as an annual event that's going to culminate all the activities that the youth can. that's going to culminate all the activities that the youth councils from the high schools have been doing. So we'll bring those in and periodically we'll, you know, bring them in for training opportunities or whatnot. It might be virtual. And then also we're working on our Ambassador's Program, which is called the Sustainability Ambassador Program. And we're convening about ten, eleven folks next week to begin those discussions. Right now, we have a skeleton of a nine-week sustainability course that's going to teach residents, you know, different elements of sustainability. Many of them will be taught by city staff, some other community members with expertise. Also, we're working on a circularity paper with the Solid Waste Department. That circularity paper will be put into a, I can't remember the magazine offhand, but we put an abstract together so far. And we got some interns doing some research and myself, Jenny Potowski, Eileen Naples, whenever she returns, we'll be working on that paper and the due date for that, I believe, is December of this year. That's our update.
Well, great.
I'm not I'm not understanding what a circularity paper is.
Well, it's dealing with the circular economy, you know, like solid waste materials management, you know, solid waste reduction. And we're actually writing an abstract on what we're doing here in the city. So we're looking at some of those at best practices across the country. And we'll be putting those things into a paper, you know, later on this year. And we definitely, you know, come on and share it with you. Two weeks into it right now.
Okay, so Galen, if people want more information, is this information all being posted on the eight-two-zero website?
Not the circularity paper, because that was solid waste originated. But I can have a meeting with any of guys, you know, myself, Jenny Potowski, just to update or just do an official update on where we are, you know, periodically as we go through these months. And, you know, also, you know, it'd be good if we can get some input too as well.
Okay. So okay, so the the next scheduled meeting is on August twenty-seven. Zoom meeting again. The next item on the agenda is public commentary. So I'm going to read my script again and Galen will see if anybody's tuned in. Okay, comment. I was expecting somebody might call in. So public comment, this is an opportunity for persons to speak up for up to three minutes. Please call one eight-eight-seven-eight-zero-nine. And enter meeting ID number nine-two-nine-five-seven-nine-six-nine-eight-two-three. This information is also displayed on the meeting agenda and video feed. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand one by one using the last three digits of your phone number. In order to electronically raise your hand to indicate your desire to speak, please press star nine on your phone. You will hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sounds so that we may hear you clearly. Please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. And please be patient. There is a delay of up to thirty seconds before the connection is established.
Mission President Brown, we have a question and a question and answer from one of the attendees, Ron. I've allowed him to speak if he would like to speak his comment or I can read it.
Yeah, and is he on that gets he connected by phone?
Oh, no, no, he's one of the attendees. He's in the room with us.
Okay, well, why don't you, yeah, why don't you have him? Well, so what are the alternatives? You want to talk?
Well, he posted a comment in the question and answer box, but he's also in here, so he can speak it if he would like to or I can read it.
Oh, great. Everybody can hear me? Can you see me also? I haven't been able to, this is my first Zoom meeting like this. Usually when I've done Zooms, it's everybody's picture is up there. But anyway, yeah, I just sent something. I've been I've been chatting a little bit with Anne about my experience in Marquette. Just to make it quick, lived in Ann Arbor in the eighties, in eighty-eight, moved to Seattle, lived there for thirty years, moved to Marquette, lived there for two years, now I'm back in Ann Arbor. And when I was up there last year, I had the idea of pursuing a lot more alternatives to polystyrene in restaurants, coffee shops, bakeries and all that. I didn't see a whole lot of businesses using alternatives to polystyrene, but there were a few. In contrast to coming down here, have enjoyed lots of takeout, as I said in the in the question and answer box. But virtually every restaurant uses styrofoam or plastic. I found that to be very odd because when I lived here in the eighties, you know, I canvassed for Greenpeace and Public Interest Research Group and it seemed to be a very, you know, environmentally conscious city. So I was a bit taken aback by the by the prevalent use of styrofoam. It's every place. So everybody knows about styrofoam, the fact that it's can be, you know, trash that you see on the ground, it can be minuscule particles that are in the water that gets into the food chain, harms wildlife and the objective up there was to use Lake Superior as a unifying issue because it's a, you know, it's something that everyone prizes. Environmentalist and not so environmentalist alike. So it worked. It got a lot of media coverage across the UP and all the newspapers up there. And we had the TV stations and all that. I had a, you know, an array of speakers representing business, restaurants, NMU, City Commissioner, all of that. It was an awareness campaign. It was to incentivize and educate and for people to just participate. As I mentioned, in the question and answer thing, there was Senate Bill eight-five-three a few years ago where there was a permanent ban on bans of this sort. Meaning, you know, there's no way if you bring your big box here that you're going to be pushed into, you know, buying more expensive materials to send folks away with. So understanding that, I've been talking to Anne a little bit about what's another angle, maybe on a local level, purely local level, an ordinance, an agreement, a resolution from the mayor's office that says, you know, here's some businesses who are doing this, yay, go Ann Arbor, we can do this without having to pass a law. So I'm I'm just at this point wondering how to maybe intersect with an existing an existing, you know, subtopic of the Environmental Commission. Very interested in Natural Features Working Group, the Heritage Landmark Tree thing, sounds good. If this is something that can be inserted into an already functioning category of things that you folks approach, I could work with Anne on how to go forward from there. And yeah, I'm just floating that out there. What what does everybody think of the possibility of getting restaurants, bakeries, coffee shops who kind of come together and say, yeah, we can do this in many cases cheaply or more or more cost effective than even styrofoam or plastic? I have a lot of data on that that came from a business owner up in Marquette. Frankly, Marquette, way up in the UP, you know, much smaller town than Ann Arbor, but they're very, very much more conscious of this now. And I would like to kind of put that out there as, once again, incentivize and participate kind of thing. Not a boom ban or law that's going to, you know, turn turn away restaurants and make them think that they're, you know, doing something that they have to do rather than doing something that they think is right and want to do. The question is, how do I help? How do I get involved? And then there's the the Heritage Landmark Tree thing. I'm very interested. And also taking a closer look at that in ways that I can volunteer to 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 keep that to keep that going or improve it or sustain it.
Okay, Ron?
Yes.
Could you just mention your name and address?
Yes, it's Ron Carnell, twenty-three-hundred Arrowood Trail, Ann Arbor, four-eight-one-zero-five.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I think the Commissioners that are on the Solid Waste Working Group, we should, I'll personally contact you in sometime tomorrow, probably or over the weekend.
Okay.
Describe these in some more detail, okay?
Great.
I'll just I'll just say at this point that that, yeah, that Senate bill was actually provoked by a law that was passed by Washtenaw County here to ban
Oh, my.
To ban plastic bags. So it kind of immediate response from the Michigan Chamber of Commerce and the Chemical Manufacturers Association. And so that's how that happened. There are it depends on the state like, you know, it's going to depend on actions of the state legislature going forward, but I can update you on other bills that are going on. For example, there's a bill being drafted to ban PFOS, you know, polyfluoroalkylated substances and food wrappers and things like that. So I can talk to you about some of that and then we could see how, you know, how we might integrate you into the work of the Commission, okay?
Okay, thank you. Real quick, on the subject of PFOS, I recently got, you know, got aware of that. Knew a little bit about it before, like now I know more. We happen to live right here on River. This is more of a kind of a personal thing. Fuller Lake is in, a friend told me, no, no, don't swim in there. A lot of people do. Don't do it. It's PFOS. What's the deal with just swimming? Do you do you guys have any insight on that?
Yeah, I think just swimming, there are no recognized health dangers by, it's the County Health Department that manages the information.
Okay.
From my awareness, there is no ban on swimming. There's no concern about that. However, there is concern about foam. If you see any particularly hoiterous foam in the river, you need to avoid that. You need you need the you know, you need your pets and everything like that to avoid it as well, because the PFOS will concentrate on the foam.
I see. Okay, well, thanks for the information on that. And I look forward to learning more about what I can do and how I can work with Anne on this. This struck her as a pretty good idea. So and like I said, I've got nothing but time. I can I can put in some work.
Okay, well, I'll give you a call tomorrow, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Galen?
See anybody else? No.
Okay, so let's wait another ten seconds, fifteen seconds.
Hi. How do you raise your hand around here? Stephen, so for a number of years after phosphates were banned in Michigan, I was regularly seeing foam below the Barton Dam in the river. And I really didn't understand that. And of course, I presume that was PFOS contamination coming down the river. It didn't last long. It was usually done, the foam was usually absorbed by the time it got around to Argo Pond. I'm also curious, and I haven't seen any scientific studies that say what the sources of the microplastics in our waterways and in ocean? Are they plastic bags? Is that the source? Is it?
Okay, I mentioned this earlier. I have some scientific papers that I can share with you as well as Bob Needham. It's basically major sources, lint from fleece, from synthetic fibers in fleece clothing.
Clothing that's getting washed and then emitting these fibers?
Yeah, that's possibly the major source in the river. It's also airborne. About half of it is airborne and it comes from many sources. It can come from brake pads, automobile brake pads, automobile tires.
So we've traded asbestos for plastics in the air and brake pads?
Yeah, well, we'll have a we'll have a discussion of that. The next meeting is going to be Bob Needham's organizing it. It's around water quality issues. And so we'll have time to talk more about this topic. Maybe at the next, maybe at the August meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to learn this.
I'm happy to share the information I have with you all, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I'll just copy everybody on it. So let me just summarize the action items. I think we have the ones that we had from last time that we'll just update. And then I'm going to add two more. One is the Commissioners will send their ideas for capstone projects to PEC. Just a paragraph, rough paragraph outlining what the idea is by September first. And so Chris, because it came in late, the basic idea was that you know, to develop clients, what are called clients for C students, capstone projects, they'd like to have ideas and projects to collaborate on with the local community. So every think about sending their ideas to to PEC for these projects. Needs to be a paragraph by September first and then we'll go through the process and, you know, see what floats to the top. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And then the the second action point I have is that I'm going to share the draft, my draft ordinance for construction and demolition recycling with people before the meeting and I don't think, I'd like some input from other people, but I don't think it will, we'll see if there'll be time on the agenda for the next meeting. The next meeting, Bob's gonna have the majority of the time. And on what we're going to talk about water quality. So I think that's it. Are there any other suggestions? Did I miss something?
We were going to make up a SMART goal for the IPM work with Jen Lawson.
That's all right. Thank you, Anne. Okay. So so are there any more action items? Last call? Okay, well, um I we're at the end of the agenda, so I will like to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, Stephen.
A motion to adjourn it. Shannon, seconded by Chris. Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at eight-fifty PM. Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, everyone. It was really great to meet everyone. Hope we can see more of you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming to Ann Arbor and contributing.
Yeah, I'm in, you know, I've got, it's my thing, you know, seniors, kids, environmental stuff, pets, all of that. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. And we'll, Mr. Brown will talk to you. We'll talk to you. Is it Steve? Is it Steve Brown? Right, yeah, we'll 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 catch up with you maybe tomorrow, eh?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, sir. Take care, everyone.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye-bye, everybody.